Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to this addition to the Board of Commissioners meeting, November 4th. I want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting, and if you do address the Board of Commissioners, please state who you are and where your address. And this is a public meeting, so it is being recorded both video and audio. Any awards recognition or correspondence?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, acknowledgment of the minutes for October 21st, 2020.
I move for approval. Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, can we identify the numbers on the screen?
Okay, we've got a couple of numbers. 541 ending in 1-0, who's that number? The 541, last two digits of 1-0.
They were muted.
Oh, yeah, okay. Go ahead, you're muted. Okay, whoever has a 1-0 number, you're not muted now. Okay, and 09, is that Robert?
Good morning, this is Robert.
Okay, not sure who the 1-0 phone number belongs to. Okay, any additions to the agenda?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any public input or recognition of visitors? Okay, hearing none. We'll go right into the business items. Item number one, enterprise zones. Is that you?
I guess, I don't know. Commissioner Murdock?
Commissioner Murdock, do you want you to do that, or is that going to be Doug?
Sorry, yes. I'm unmuted.
Yes for you, or yes for Doug? Doug, take it away.
What's before the Board is two agreements for approval. There are two projects in the greater Yumitilla enterprise zone. The county and the city of Yumitilla are the co-sponsors for the zone, and so those two entities have to approve any agreement for a development within the enterprise zone. These two projects are identical in size and are located adjacent to one another in the Wanapa area. They're referred to West Wanapa and East Wanapa for identification purposes. The plan is that the east one will develop first, and it should begin shortly. With negotiations with the developer, it, the terms of the agreement are very similar to previous ones with this developer. The payment in lieu of taxation should be no less than $2 million a year with a 15-year tax exemption period. They've also agreed to pay additional fees for public safety and school. And slightly different in this one is that they will be allowed a offset for some certain charitable contributions they make, up to $150,000 a year. And so both of these are before the Board for approval. The City Council for the city of Yumitilla approved it last night, so it is now ready for the Board for their consideration.
Just to confirm, the city approved both of them?
Both of them, yes.
Okay.
For the information of the Board, Doug, myself, and I believe Paul participated in the negotiation with the city of Yumitilla to forge an agreement for both projects, and so at least keep it on, I would move for approval.
There are two orders, and they probably need to be approved separately. The first order is BCC 2020-068, and it's for East Wanapa.
And I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
And then...
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the second one.
And that is order number BCC 2020-077 for West Wanapa.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Elections payable, was Dan on the phone?
Good morning.
Good morning. Late night for you, was it?
Time to go home, Dan.
It was after 1:00. We got things counted just before 1:00, so I got home at 2:00.
Wow. Hope you enjoyed your nap.
Yeah, well, everybody else had to go to work, so they made it too much noise for me to sleep, so.
Did you have a good...
Yes.
Were you there?
What was that, Mr.?
Did you have a good career down helping out?
Yeah, you know, things were pretty smooth. It's, I think, it went a lot smoother than the last presidential election, even though we had a little less people. We, you know, a lot of the equipment we purchased has helped us out quite a bit. A lot of people voted early, and so we didn't have as many people storming our doors on Election Day, on Election Day, so that helped out quite a bit, too.
Looked like you had a pretty solid stream of people, though, especially there at the end.
It was still busy, but yeah, once about 7:00, I came around, there was only about one or two, just a handful of people came in.
Good. Okay.
Yes, so before you commissioners, there's the payable there for OSDBR maintenance. It's $7700, a little bit over that, and that is for the statewide voter registration system, each county paid within a portion, and including the Secretary of State's office paid within their portion, so it's kind of divvied up based on all that. And it hasn't gone up, it's the same price we pay every year, and it's over the $5,000 amount, so that's before you.
Mr. Chairman, move approval. Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Looks like we're still with you. Maintenance payable.
Yes, so the maintenance payable is for automatic door openers, the health department, and also we're planning ADA door for the bathrooms. Now that we're making those first floor bathrooms ADA, and so that's a total of $7,000 in CNH Glass, and they are a local company, so.
Good.
So how close are we to being totally ADA group here?
Once we finished the men's bathroom, then we have the ladies' room. The men's bathroom is the ladies' room, because it needed the bigger rooms so that we could have at least two stalls in there. And the men's room will be the new, the old ladies' room, and so depending on how we can move forward with construction with noise due to the court's recording system, it takes a while. But as usual, laws change, different things change, we find different things. You're never ever going to be always, I think, compliant, because things do change. Once you fix one item, you find out that something else was there, and you get always overlooked it. So I don't know if you'll ever be 100%, but once we get these two bathrooms done, we will be a lot better on the first floor, even though we'll have to go to the third floor. It is a big step in that direction.
Second floor. The second floor.
The second floor is ADA already.
Yeah. I thought it was.
Usually, the reason why we used to tell people to go to the third floors, I always forget, used to the way things were, we had the security on the second floor, and they had to put somebody to use the second floor, pressurize, because you had to go through security and all that, so yeah, it's a little bit more accessible now on the second floor.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the payable.
Excuse me? This is Robert, can I say a few words?
Please do.
So that payable is for the down payment for those doors, I believe it's half of the total cost, and so it would make sense for you to approve this as well as the final payment, rather than just approving this and then having to approve the final payment later, I think.
Yes, I'm sorry, that is correct.
Would you...
I move my motion to state as mine. The second one, please.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. GIS license purchase.
On that there, we're buying a license for our GIS, and the planning department used to have one, and our GIS department pays maintenance on it, so the upgrades are just part of the maintenance, but the planning department didn't do that. We have our GIS fund, which has quite a bit of money in there that we haven't been spending, and we're going to go ahead and split that with the planning department and pay part of their license to upgrade their GIS software in the planning department there. And I think part of that, too, is the maintenance. Let's see. Yeah? Sorry. It has a $400 renewal fees, including the...
And is that an annual fee, that $400?
Yeah, that's what we usually pay, so the, I guess where I go with that is, the planning department from now on will pay their, the plan is to pay that annual $400 maintenance fee, so that they don't have to pay like a $7,000 fee down the line to get their software upgraded.
Gotcha. Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Mr. Fellows, forklift purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. Our, one of our forklifts out here at the yard has experienced some transmission difficulty. It was rather unexpected, but as luck would have it, Surplus Properties had one that would suit our needs for replacement for it, so our intent is to get this replacement and then auction off the old forklift to somebody that has the time and patience to do some, do the repairs and whatnot. The old forklift, 1980, and it's certainly seen its good use out here, so we're requesting to purchase this forklift from Surplus Properties for $20,000.
Tom, what's the year on this one?
Pardon me?
What's the year on the one that you're proposing purchase of?
You know, I apologize, none of the information that I got had the year on it, and, which is unusual, I don't have that, Commissioner.
What would you be at normal cost of the new one?
New, new, these run up in the $60,000 to $70,000 range in nets without the attachments, then you have to get the work attachment on top of that.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval. Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This is also you. It's a roller purchase.
Okay, so the next purchase, of course, would be for a pneumatic roller. These, we use these rollers primarily for chip seal, but we also use them a lot of times when we're doing road grading functions out, and we have a certain amount of moisture. We also have roller attachments for graders, but this is, this would be in addition to the fleet. The one that we currently have is, I didn't put the year on that, I certainly looked that up fairly quickly for you, but I know we purchased that one over 20 years ago, and we didn't purchase a new one, we did. So our intent is, is to primarily have a, one that we use on a regular basis, and then have a backup for our chip seal program, so that we don't get ourselves in a pinch. This is Oregon State Surplus roller that they've been using for chip seal. It's a 2001 for $12,000, has around 2,000 hours on the machine.
What would normally useful life?
Yeah, well, that's kind of a loaded question. I mean, they generally, the companies that will buy these, will run, try to run them 500 to 1,000 hour of the year. Obviously, due to our seasonal aspect of chip seal, they don't get that. So, I mean, they'll, I fully expect that this roller with only 2,000 hours on it should give us a number of years. I wouldn't hesitate, I think that we could probably get eight, another eight or 10 years easily out of it with good maintenance.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Wiring replacement.
Yeah, as the Commissioners may have heard, our crusher experienced some theft. They, this go-around, and it seems like it happens periodically, I mean, it's, there's no rhyme and reason to it, but this go-around, they stripped everything, clear from the motors to the switch house, to the tune of, we got estimates out of the crusher companies, one from Modern Machinery for $14,903, one from North Coast for $15,878. We, we do business with both of these companies, and we'd like to go with the Modern Machinery quote on the replacement wire and ends at this point.
Does insurance pick up the cost on that?
I, we're looking into that. There's, there's been some discussion over whether they will or whether they won't. At this, this point, I think we're going to recoup some of it, maybe. Shelley's been, been working with the insurance company and trying to get their thing narrowed down.
Okay.
I thought for physical damage on equipment vehicles, we were largely self-insured.
Well, that was always my understanding, but she has had the conversation with the, with Ronnie on it, and I'm not sure where they're at at this point, but we, but we need to move forward and get the crusher back up crushing anyway, and try to work our way through the, this, that issue going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval. Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Boat house purchase, I'm beginning to think that last two digits of 1-0 might be somewhere from the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Suresh, it's Under Sheriff Littlefield.
Good morning, Under Sheriff.
How are you guys this morning?
Fabulous, how are you?
Good, got some sleep last night.
Finally. I gave up.
Not nearly enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More than Dan Lanai, though.
Yeah. Well, what we have before us today is we're seeking approval to purchase a metal structure to house one of our boats at the McNary Dam, and we have a quote from a local company, Coast Hardports, for this single bay structure of $5,321. The background on the project is that last year, through our relationship with the Oregon State Marine Board, they donated two jet boats to the county, and asked us to sell those boats and put the proceeds back into the program. We were able to sell both of the boats to a private party for $18,000. We've used some of those funds for equipment and maintenance on the other boats in the fleet, and we have adequate funds left over to fund this purchase of this boat house, and it'll be placed at the McNary Dam, so that we'll have a place to store one of the boats indoors and out of the weather and the elements through the winter. There'll also be a location where it will be quickly deployed should we have an incident on the Clonkey River.
Mr. Chairman, move approval. Go ahead, Commissioner Murdock, go ahead.
I think, yeah, he moved already.
Second, but I have a question. This is for the purchase of a single, three-sided structure to be at McNary. Is this the first of two? As I, as I look at it, I see that there's going to be a two-bay, three-sided that you've looked into a price for, is there an intention to move from, after this one is done, to move to that one? For...
It's a possibility, so with the original plan was to site a second building, two-bay, to place the other boats in our fleet at the Pendleton Campus. However, we talked with Mark Tanner and determined that the prep work to site the building was cost prohibitive, was about $15,000, which would have taken most of our funds. There is a possibility that we can work with the Marine Board to fund some of that, so that's on the horizon, possibly that we could purchase that two-bay structure from the same company. We had a quote from them, I think it was about $7,000 for the two-bay structure. The prep work was going to be about twice that cost, so it drove the cost up.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public health payable, thank you, Under Sheriff. Public health payable, is Joe on the phone?
He was. Yes, I am here.
Ah-ha, there he is.
Sorry, just getting it up in front of me here.
No worries.
So this first one is a payable for Diamond Media. This is for an advertisement campaign. What they have put together for us, we're paying for 1,500 spots, they're matching us another 1,500 spots, or total of 3,000, 32 ads over the next year. This includes all translation and preparation activity needed, so we're able to send them our, our ads in English in our format, and they convert it over so that it applies across their Spanish-speaking radio networks in the format that is understandable to their listeners. So we are asking to have this paid, they did want this paid upfront, which we were okay with on our end, and we are using funds that we received from paid for corporate spots. Most of this additionally will be COVID, you know, information about distancing, wearing masks, et cetera, and we, this will transition to COVID vaccine information as we get that in.
So Joe, is this the COVID-19 funding that you already have in the department?
I'm sorry?
Is this COVID-19 funding that you already have through, through public health, or is this one that we would be putting in line for reimbursement if the state opens up doors, the cities were prepared funding for?
Sure. So this did originate as care of funding, this is funding that has already been, I don't know if we've actually received it yet, but it has been guaranteed to us by this day.
Very good. Thank you.
I like the fact that they're matching us. That's pretty impressive. Anybody who's run for public office knows that radio ads are not cheap, so, so I think that's a great deal. So I would entertain a motion on that.
So move. Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It looks like you're still up. Sign replacement.
So the next one is for payment for a new electronic sign reader board that would replace the one we currently have on our building. I don't know how old the one on our building is, I can just tell you the computer that functions it is still operating on Windows 98 at this point. Many of those issues with the board previously were stopped working for us, and then it suddenly started working again. We are told parts for it are not an option, and again, as part of the messaging and media campaign we're putting out, we've got, we've got some funding for some of the COVID messaging and so forth that we want to use to replace this sign board. We feel with our location on Highway 11, we get a lot of traffic through that road. We think it's a good spot to get messaging out.
All the things I was going to say to support it, Joe, you said about being on a state highway and the importance of our messaging, we're very important in that regard, and I appreciate the fact we've had instance. We mutually look at the signs, so I move for approval. Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on sign? All in favor of the motion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Oh, it's still you, UCO Health, RN FTE.
Yeah, so we've had a lot of work going on, and as we've done some of our discovery work on planning for vaccine deployment, looking at clinic operations that we have going on, mobile contact tracing activities still ongoing, staffing specifically around workers is one of the areas we've identified, especially as we get into vaccine territory that we are likely to be very short of. We are working on community agreements and arrangements with partners in the area, hospitals, pharmacies, et cetera, but we want to see, you know, we don't go to the point, we want to go look. Historically, it's taken us quite a bit of time to fill in nursing position. We didn't want to get to the end of this, and vaccine ready to go, we sitting here wishing we had voted for a nursing position, and we wanted to, again, with the funding we receive from the state for response, we wanted to see if we could get out there and find another nurse, and both through the ranks, and really be in the position where we need to be for vaccine order.
I don't really see that there is a soul in Yumitilla County that would be supporting with getting a nurse out so we get the vaccine and get COVID-19 behind us as quickly as possible, and to do that with an additional physician, I would move approval. Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On-call position. I don't know if, this is for the DA's office, is Dan on the phone? Okay, Dan is...
If you're going to have to talk about that, because you were more involved than I was.
Yeah, so...
I can actually do it.
Okay. I don't know who said that, but I'm going... I don't know who said that, but I'm going for it. Jennifer said that.
Yeah, Jennifer Blake, Human Resources Director. So what you have before you is kind of a new, new thought in the district attorney's office, but Dan is working with a relatively new team at this point and was going to lose one of his experienced prosecutors, and through some conversations, we came up with an idea to extend an offer to her to be able to work on-call, no more than 19 hours a week, or no more than averaging 19 hours a week. This would allow for us to get some cross-training done and some charging of cases done with an experienced prosecutor, while, and maintain some level of experience in the office.
So Jennifer, is this an, an add to the, to the staff? Has the person who would be filling this, this spot, has her position been backfilled?
It, it will be backfilled, yes. So yes, this would be in addition.
After having conversations with Dan Premis, I am in favor of this. This, this particular person that's wanting to go to an on-call status brings a lot to the table, a lot of experience handling some delicate cases, and it'd be a shame to lose that experience, so I am 100% in favor.
Particularly when we're always short people, so I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Jennifer, will you let Dan know?
I will.
Thank you. Fair board terms.
I can probably speak to this one, being the lead on to the, to the county fair. Inasmuch as the fair this year was extremely trumpeted to open a live stock sale, most of the fair board members had little or no function or involvement, and it seemed appropriate as we were extending the, the terms for, for the fair court, and to extend it also to the fair board members so that they have a full experience for an additional year. So all of them, save one, were agreeable and amenable and wanted to do this, so that's what I bring before you.
I noticed something about one of them leaving and a new one being identified. Is that also part of the motion?
That's already been approved. The, the one that's, that's expiring, I don't, I don't know that we have to do anything special there. That position would just not be extended, except that this person would have been the, the replacement commissioner, as we have the, the overlapping experience going on on the fair board. It's just that they will not have that, so I don't think there's any, anything difficult in the order, other than the order actually applies to all the physicians, so.
We have our counsel waiting in the wings here.
And since there technically could be a vacancy by Luke Dines not wanting extension, what we did instead is propose to move the board, yes, the member-elect to that position. So rather than becoming the new position number three, he'll become position number six. And then the plan is to go out and try to recruit someone through our normal process to have a board-elect for next year as well, and that would come before you later. So all you have to do now is just move to approve order number BCC 2020-078, and that incorporates all of the changes and the extensions to the terms.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Emergency declaration. You sat down too soon.
As a board member recall back in March, you declared an emergency in Yumitilla County due to the COVID pandemic. You have extended that three times, and it now is set to expire today. What's before you is to extend that additional time period through January 6th of 2020.
What is the governor extended the, the emergency to?
I think just through the end of the year.
Okay. And that'll be our first board meeting in January, is that?
That's why it's January 6th.
Okay. Just making sure on that. With, with the emergency declaration, that, that'll afford us a little bit more latitude in dealing with COVID-19. One of the things that jumped to my attention was when the Oregon Emergency Management Director, Andrew Phelps, made on a, a comment on a conference call, he said, if you, if your county does not have an emergency declaration in place, while the state does, you're, you could be ineligible for certain funding opportunities. So that to me was a real important reason why we wanted to maintain that emergency.
Yeah, you were talking about the governor's order.
Yes.
I believe, isn't that firing or today? And has she already extended her, or extended the order?
Yeah, she extended hers to the end of the year, but our, our next board meeting wouldn't be until the first Ja, January 6th, I believe.
Why would I move approval?
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Robert, supplemental budgets. Oh, public hearing. Sorry, I gotta, we gotta go into public hearing mode. I just saw that, so. Let's suspend our regular meeting, go into public hearing mode.
Your agents, commissioners, this is the staff report for two supplemental budgets that are before you today. Budget order 2021-14, Human Services, the Alcohol, Drug and Gambling Services Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $96,000 and an increase in contingency of $96,000. Next, budget order 2021-15, Capital Projects Funds Facility Reserve Program. The Facility Reserve Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $137,000 and an increase in contingency of $137,000.
Any questions for the commissioners? Comments or concerns?
It's always nice to be that he transfers in, but he doesn't transfer out.
Yeah. Okay. Anything from the public? Hearing none. We'll suspend the public hearing me, or no, we'll end the public hearing meeting, and we'll go back to our regular public meeting.
As is tradition, I will defer to the golden voice of Commissioner Alfred.
I move approval for the order 2021-15.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Is somebody knocking at one of your desks trying to get in? Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That is that. Commissioner reports. Usually I start with one of the other two, but I'm going to start first this time because I want to be the first to officially congratulate Commissioner-elect Dan Doran. Congratulations on your, on the election, so.
He too has a golden voice, so he can replace Commissioner Alfred.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
He's been done in many respects.
So that's all, that's all I had. Dan, congratulations. I know what a process it is, so it was, you know, congrats. So looking forward to working with you. Commissioner Alfred.
Well, I, I, you brought me of my opportunity. I was, I had it on my, on my agenda to, to extend my congratulations to, to Dan on the election last night, and so it was wonderful to see him as well. I'll look forward to working with him in the, in the interim, in the late-up period to help transition him into the office. I know he won't gain very, very much help. He's very experienced in, in life and in business, and I think he'll be an excellent addition to our board of commissioners. So congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Murdock.
Yeah, I had a visit with Dale Premis this morning. I think we, I, we probably need to, to find a time for all three commissioners to meet with him, I would suppose. I don't think we're having a staff meeting on Monday because Commissioner Alfred and myself are both, have other things to do that morning, but I, I think we need to sit down with, with Dale and talk about the impact of, of the passage of Measure 110, which will probably cost his department about $600,000. It will also have implications for the sheriff's office and have implications for Human Services. And he could explain it better than I can, but it'd be a pretty significant hit to the budget because of, of what they will no longer be doing with respect to drug offenders. So I'd have, I'd order you that we should probably have a serious talk with him sooner up there than later.
Commissioner Murdock, I would suggest also that we include in that being Commissioner-elect Doran, who should be part of my conversation, part of his previa.
Right, that would be fine, but it's, it's no small, no small impact on us.
I understand that.
So hearing the severity of this, I'm looking at the schedule. I'm on KMA tomorrow at 8:30. Commissioner Alfred, you've got a 10 o'clock with Kerry Walshley. Do we want to try doing it tomorrow morning? Could you push that one back with Kerry, maybe?
Yes, I could.
Oh, looks like I'm free.
Doug, is that okay with you, if we did like a 9:30? I see Commissioner-elect looking at his calendar there, so. Well, I don't care if Dale's free or not. So let's, let's tentatively agree on a 9:30. We can do that at the courthouse, obviously, or zoom in, probably. Yeah, zoom in, according to counsel, so.
Did you say 9:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they like me so much at KMA, they may want to keep me a little longer. Nothing from you? Okay. All righty. Anything else? Commissioner Murdock?
No.
All righty. Again, that is it. Looks like that's the end of our agenda, so thank you, everybody, and this meeting is adjourned.